Been going on.
At least that lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, then too.
Okay, everyone, welcome. It's 6:00 PM. This is December 11th, 2023. I'm gonna call this regular meeting of El Campo City Council to order. Certification of quorum. Two council members are absent tonight, Mayor Pro Tem Bustamante and Councilman Koblentz. But we do have a quorum with five present. If everyone would please stand for the pledges and the invitations.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Family Father, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to represent the citizens of El Campo. I would pray that you give us wisdom and discernment and guidance as we go through tonight's agenda. Father, be with those in our community that are sick or grieving. I pray that you would address each one of those needs in only the way that you can. Father, during this Christmas season, I ask that you keep everyone safe. And thank you for the families will get together and enjoy the holiday. Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, item four, we have a public hearing. One item is item Z 2023-01, application by Doris Adamczyk, property owner, for a change in zoning from General Commercial District C2 and Industrial Business Park District M1B. The General Commercial District C2 on approximately 22.0992, that sounds very exact, rather than approximate, acres of A 20521 abstract 521 tract four lot 1J. General location Zero Highway 59, El Campo, Texas 77437. Is there anyone here to address this item during this public hearing?
Well, I don't know if I should address on Doris. I just wanted rezoned commercial. If it's commercial, should I stand or am I okay around here?
Why don't we wait till we get to the agenda item?
Oh, okay. Sorry.
This is really a time for others, I guess, to comment. Thank you. Glad you're here, Doris. I should've said that we entered the public hearing at 6:02 PM. We are closing it at 6:03 PM. Public comments. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment? Then I will forego the reading of item five. Item six, consent agenda. There's one item, approval of city council regular meeting November 13th, 2023 at 6:00 PM minutes.
So I'm looking.
I have a motion by Councilman Hancock. Have a second?
Second.
Second, by Councilman Berger. I assume that to approve those, the city council agenda, their minutes of November 13th. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the city council regular meeting agenda minutes of November 13th, 2023? Please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item seven, items for individual consideration. Item one, ordinance 2023-22, rezoning approximately 22.0992 acres of A 20521 abstract point 521 tract four lot 1J, generally located at Zero Highway 59, El Campo, Texas 77437, from General Commercial District C2 and Industrial Business Park District M1B, the General Commercial District C2.
And this item is in reference to the public hearing you just held. Our planning director, Crystal Hasselmeier, will provide a brief presentation.
Good evening. We've already conducted our public hearing earlier in this agenda. Here is a site map showing the location for this rezon request, the 2023-01 rezon outlined in blue there. The site details I normally have in your packet, but notice we had a technical issue, so you have them added to your, or your desks here, show that most of this area is gonna be agriculture in nature. It's adjacent to the Texas Highway 59 corridor, and there's one house that's part of one of those agriculture pieces. Some extra details that are typically in your packet and available to you in advance are that this request is initiated by the property owner to sell the property for commercial-only use. It's currently and actively listed for sale. It is part of 10 other M1B light industrial park zone parcels that have C2 zoning along the Highway 59 border. M1B, as noted, includes C2 uses. In fact, it's mostly C2 uses, with the exception of a few things, and then adds manufacturing activities on top of that. There's no impact on the surrounding properties that we've been able to identify, and we have had no opposition to this request. Let's see. It is eligible for approval, and it is recommended by approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on November 15th. It was a, it was a four-three vote for that, so it was kinda close. One of the arguments or questions that we had is why we're not rezoning the entire area that you'll see outlined on the bottom right. And so one of the things that we're gonna do is we're bringing this one to you at that owner-initiated request, and then if it is approved tonight, we will be bringing the rest of these properties to you to finish that area. And it's okay that way, as long as you guys want all of that to be approved. But if you want to not approve this, we're gonna bring all of it, including this lot, in January or February to reconsider for commercial area. C2, again, mostly makes up the M1B uses. So we do strongly recommend considering the rezon for this area for the purpose of what's in that neighboring zoning of residential. And I'm available for questions, as well as the property owner, who identified herself earlier, if there's anything.
So just for clarification of property, it's white in the upper right-hand corner. What is that one?
This one right here? That square?
Oh, the upper right.
Upper right. Well, all of this pink along the highway is your C2?
No, I just counted which bit.
I think that's Pinchers.
Oh, that's Pinchers. Okay, yeah.
There, and then that is Eric Schoenfield.
Right, okay. I couldn't tell that was Pinchers or my cask goes to which one that one was. Okay. I can see Divide Street now. Okay, I think you're wise to include all of it and not leave that spot out. You'll just have to come back eventually into it.
We will. It's on the schedule for the January P&amp;Z meeting, so that depending on how this is decided tonight, we'll either bring back the rest or all of it, so that we can get that general area. We've had some discussion with the P&amp;Z and some things brought up around having industrial uses directly adjacent to your residential areas being a hazard, as well as it being along the Trace Palacios, which becomes an environmental issue if something were to occur. So it is an overall opinion that this would be a good
But aren't any residential areas adjacent to any of that on either side, is there?
Just on the other side of Blue Creek is where it becomes residential, and there is a residential.
Okay, right. Across the creek?
Yes, sir.
Now, how much of that is still on the floodplain?
I would have to, so we're gonna get a new flood map done soon.
We just built that big detention pond. I didn't know if it had taken part of that out of the floodplain or not.
It's taken parts of the areas out of it, not officially, but according to FEMA, everything is still as it is. So until they do that map, it's called the LOMA revision, we won't know for sure exactly how much is pulled out.
Okay. Thank you.
Crystal, how many landowners involved in this that are gonna be rezoning?
It'll be 10 parcels plus this one, so 11 parcels. The area around the Pinchers is owned by the Schoenfields. They own that full upper half. I did personally send letters to all of the property owners and have had contact with the couple who are in agreement and have asked for this as well. But it'll just be probably a handful, since he owns most of those.
And all the landowners are on board?
Yes, sir. I have had no opposition. That has been voiced to me, at least.
It's correctly zoned based upon the comprehensive plan, correct, Curly?
Yeah, the comprehensive plan that was updated in 2020 shows it as a light industrial area. So light industrial versus C2, light industrial is made up of C2 minus three things plus 29 manufacturing things. So when you look at the growth patterns of our community and you're seeing where we're growing and where our industrial needs are finding better opportunities for space, this is one that would, would be an area you would see converting over to commercial and maybe residential if you wanted in the future, but at least commercial.
But by making this change tonight, we're gonna divide it up. So you'll have, I mean, it'll change just the middle section there to a different zone. So we're essentially creating what the issue that we had on the loop, correct, with the plan development? There was various different zoning zones, and then this will create that. And if we're not able to, if Planning and Zoning doesn't approve that, then it's going to divide that, correct?
Yes and no. So you are creating a new, you're not creating a zone, because the things that were created on the West Loop were plan developments that were custom ones. This is just rezoning.
Not the plan development, the actual zone. There was residential, there was commercial. There was three different zones there that had to be combined.
On the one side for the.
Yeah, prior to the P&amp;Z.
That's exactly what we would do with this site, is that we would create two, two different zones now.
You would just be, so right now it is two zones. You have the, if you see the pink along the blue along 59, that's C2. And the stripe where it looks like there's not much, there's stripes, that's the M1B. You're making it all that pink color, and you're gonna be pulling out an additionally unnecessary zone in that area for more congruency. So that's one of the reasons that we're gonna be bringing it back as a full piece.
Why didn't we do it all at one time and save that time, that effort?
This one is actively listed, so we want to potentially take away the possibility of an industrial development purchase. I mean, you can do it either way. You can approve it now or not approve it, and we can bring the rest or all of it back. So it's up to the determination tonight.
Is there, is there a contract on this property?
It's for sale and two commercial. People were interested in it. They're commercial only. And since it's done with commercial industrial, they match all.
When do you anticipate taking it to P&amp;Z?
It's gonna be on the 117 meeting for P&amp;Z, and then we'll bring it to you all on the 12th. The way it lines up with the timeline, it would be February 12th for you.
Any more questions for Crystal? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion. We go along with the application by Doris Adamczyk in rezon 22.0992 acres. And in the resumé for General Commercial District C2. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Sir.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the rezoning by Councilman Hodges. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Second back, Councilman Hancock. Any questions? Comments? Okay. There being none, we have a motion to approve ordinance 2023-22, rezoning approximately 22.0992 acres of A 20521 abstract point 521 tract four lot 1J, generally located at Zero Highway 59, El Campo, Texas 77437, from General Commercial District C2 and Industrial Business Park District M1B to General Commercial District C2. All in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. All against the motion. Motion passes three to two.
Thank you.
Okay, item 7.2, Resolution 2023-38, authorizing a multiple-use agreement between the State of Texas, Texas Department of Transportation, and the City of El Campo for the installation of license plate readers and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
And this is just a cleanup item for a grant that we received notification on in March. We've already entered the agreement. You approved that with FLOC. That's the, the manufacturer of those license plate readers, also LPRs. But now we need an agreement with Tech dot, so that's what this resolution does.
This is basically what we talked about before?
Yes, sir. The same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Just that we were agreeing to enter the, we were agreeing to a contract with.
FLOC.
FLOC, and we need to enter into a contract with Tech dot instead.
We need both, yeah.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution R 2023-38. That's presented.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Berger to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Steve, and to approve Resolution R 2023-38. Any questions or comments? I do have a question. When will these cameras be installed, Chief? Any idea?
Pretty quick. Once, once the state authorize it, we already have two up that were in the city right of way. And once the city right of way was approved, they were up within a month. So we have six of these to go up. So I suspect that unless, obviously, weather the situation, I would hope that once Tech dot accepts it, then it shouldn't take very long to get them put up. They're pretty efficient when they get to doing their work. So if it's all paid for, it's, it's, all it has to do is be put up by the company.
Now, is this the, is this a fixed thing, or is this these?
These are fixed.
Not these radar indicators?
These are actually the FLOC cameras that are, that are fixed at different locations throughout the city. These are the ones that are on state right of ways. Basically, if people leave the city or enter the city, they're already set up to where we can capture most of the, the major state roads that are, that are in the city and also.
So it just records the license numbers?
Yeah, it takes, it actually takes pictures of the vehicle and the license plate. So you get, you get a little both. And as part of the, actually, the system is nationwide. So we share our data with them. That's part of the agreement. We have a FLOC, and we also get the data from, from the cameras throughout the state and actually the nation.
Does it have to read the front license plate, or can you get the back one too?
Either one.
Either one? So if you don't have a front license plate, you still get the back one?
Right. And we've got, like I said, they're coming and going, so.
It'll be like the EZ tag on the toll roads?
Similar, similar technology.
Where will they be? On overpasses or some?
Actually, I can tell you, they're gonna be, I got the list right here. Thought you might ask.
I'm sure that'll be real helpful to you. I just need to know where to wave when I go around.
We're gonna have one at 2350 US 59 on the northbound side. And these are, this is gonna be one at 3203 East Jackson Street on the southbound side. So you get north and south on that one. Then we'll have one at 213 Legends Way on 71, and one on 1615 South Mechanic on the other side of town, as you leave the town. And then we have one near Palacios and Muncie, which is looking at the 59 part from that street. And we'll have one westbound 1162 at 59. So most of the major in and outs. And we have two that are within the city right now that are up and operational. One's on Metal Lane as it, towards where the loop is, 59, and the other one on Divide Street, near as you leave when you go out towards, you mentioned Pinchers earlier. Those are already up and operational.
Chief, once the reader picks up a license plate that's for stolen car or whatever, how quickly do y'all learn about that?
It's, it's very quickly, because we're all, it's interconnected, so they send the notice to us. It's, it's, I've worked with these before, and so it's, it's not instantaneous, but it's pretty close. Because once it hits it, then we have to verify, obviously. So it's, if you, if that, once it hits that, it goes to the system, comes to us, gives us a notification. And then, of course, we have to look at the vehicle and see where it's at, you know, because it's probably, it's on the move usually. And so, you know, from that, then we verify. Very similar to some, in our cars, if we have the LPR readers in the car, same thing goes up. It pops up, and we get, we get a warning that's, that's entered as a stolen plate. It's not 100%. Some agencies don't take their stolen plates out like they should. And I'm just gonna mention initials, Houston Police Department. And so, you know, they may be in there for a month or two. So we're always very careful. When we, when we look at that, we verify if they are stolen.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any more questions? If not, all in favor of the motion to approve Resolution R 2023-38, authorizing a multiple-use agreement between the State of Texas, Texas Department of Transportation, and the City of El Campo for the installation of license plate readers and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. Please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
It doesn't record the speed, does it?
You what?
Doesn't record the speed, does it?
No, it's not a speed camera. It's not a speed camera.
Okay, item 7.3, discuss and consider charter amendments proposed by city council, if any.
And the floor is yours, Mayor, and the council's on this particular item.
Okay. Are there any, the Charter Review Commission has completed its work. This council has the opportunity to present a proposed amendment to the voters, if anyone has a proposal.
When is the dead, when would be the deadline if we were to have one?
Today, ideally.
Oh, okay. Guess we will wait.
Is there one you wanna throw out there?
No, no, sir.
Okay.
Not at this moment.
Okay, then let the record show that council did not have any proposed charter amendments. Item 7.4, City Development Corporation Budget Amendment, FY 2223.
And I'll ask Carolyn Gibson, the executive director of the City Development Corporation, to come up here and explain or answer any questions you may have regarding their budget amendment for 2223, which needs the approval of council.
Mayor and council, Carolyn Gibson, executive director of the CDC. We're a little late with these. In the coming year, you're gonna see these before the end of the fiscal year. I wrote out, I included a copy of the budget for last year, the budget for this year, just FYI. And then the actual end of the year, September is the third column in the Excel spreadsheet. Do y'all want me to go through each one of these, or have you had time to review them? Do you have any questions? What, what you really wanna look at is that summary page, packet page 43. There you go. The most, the thing that I think needs the most explanation is the very last one on that page. There's been $152,975.53 receivable writing in the, the CDC books for years. It was way before I got here, and it is related to that biodiesel plant. I hate to even say the words. I had nothing to do with it. But it, we need to get it off our books. You know, I can tell everybody it's old, it's in QuickBooks, but this finally gets, gets it done and does away with it. So it, technically, for auditing purposes, it's showing as a debit on our budget, but we're not out the cash.
Why would you include that in your budget? Wouldn't that be in your financials?
Both. But it has to be, it's not a budgeted expense, so we had to add it, add it to the budget. I know, didn't make much sense, but.
It wasn't receivable, you said?
It was a forgivable loan. It was never, I don't think the money was ever given.
So you were committed, basically it was committed, the 153, but it, but it was.
I thought they gave him close to 200,000.
I, I don't know anything about the project. There are no records about it. I, Beverly.
It's 205, 205,000.
This was way back when, when that group came to town talking about putting that in.
Did they give him money upfront?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
205,000?
Something like that. Close to a couple hundred thousand.
I think that there's litigation and there's a judgment that's been secured. I don't know.
I didn't know about that. I just remember when it passed.
Ronnie, do y'all have any records of that that you know of?
Was that Shandra? Was that her?
I, I think it was, was it Shandra, or was it before Shandra?
It was Earl Joy.
Earl, what's his name?
Earl Joy.
What's his name?
Earl Joy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can't even find, when we were doing all that reporting, that stuff we put together, we couldn't find a file warrant about it.
I'll take it with me.
Probably took everything. There's no telling. So was a judgment against us?
No.
Okay. It was against the biodiesel people?
There was, there was a guarantor on a gentleman by name of John Autry. He was the financial guy behind it, and he had personally guaranteed the.
So we have a judgment against him?
We do.
You would think there would be some kind of record of that somewhere in the office. I will call you about that.
I, I know we had a file warrant.
I'm sorry, but I'm just.
Kinda embarrassed to say a little bit, yeah.
So Carolyn, where's this 153 show up in the spreadsheets prior?
At the very, very bottom, the very, underneath the business incentives, on page 41. You'll see all the business expenses here, and then the, the board always puts 5% in the budget for reserve. It's right below that in red.
Are they expending it to offset the liability? Is that what they're doing? So they can clear that?
They say that's the only way to get it out of there.
That's your financials. That's not this budget that you have here.
But we can't have it come out of our financials if it's not budgeted, because then the auditor will ding us big time. And we don't want that.
You have to keep it in your budget because it's unfunded and you're committed to it?
We have to keep it in our budget because we don't know anything about it. It's showing as a liability in the CDC's books.
Yeah.
Like for the, when the city was doing our financials, it didn't show in any of those reports. It's showing in the CDC's QuickBooks account. And to, to clean that up, we've, the auditor said we had to do it this way. This is an audit entry, auditor entry.
That's, it doesn't make any sense. It was funded, and it was paid out.
It, it is, the whole thing makes no sense. But in a nutshell, the, the CDC's QuickBooks are carrying this $153,000 as an unfunded liability. And in order to get it out of there and to zero us out at the, in other words, year after year after year, it's been carried forward as an unfunded liability. And as long as the city was doing our financials, that didn't pop up. But as soon as KML took them over, they took our QuickBooks basis of our books to begin what KML was doing the financing, finances for. And there, that $153,000 was. And so the auditor, that was in his final report, that we needed to get that out of there.
As offset?
Yeah.
They used an expenditure line item as an offset for the liability?
Yep. I know it doesn't make sense, because it makes it look like that's coming out of our funds when it's not.
Good plan, anyway.
But that's, once again, I go back to that's your financials. This is the budget. Or is this your financials that you're presenting us and that had to have, kinda like what Brittany does, and she brings in and shows us, you know, this expenditure and has a, where she makes those adjustments. Is that?
Yes, that's what, that's what this is.
I bet I could dig up some old, that, that hasn't been on your bud, any of these budgets prior to 2017.
No, I know it hasn't, because the city's been doing the books. And see, they've been doing it in in code. And see, they've been doing it in n-code. They didn't start with those old QuickBooks entries. I agree, it makes no sense, but in order to clean it up, this is what the auditor said we had to do. Is that, am I explaining that correctly? Ms. Finance Director.
Thank you. Sure.
Slash city manager. Any other questions? Hopefully this will be the last time I have to hear anything about the biodiesel plant.
I think they're just now starting to develop the technology to make biodiesel, 20 years later.
I won't go a court in them, I can very much shoot that.
Someone like to make a motion on item 7.4?
See item number?
Item 7.4.
7.4. I move, Mr. Mayor, I move a point, re-approve item 7.4. Here it is, y'all see this, the CDC fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget amendment summary.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Hancock, second by Councilman Hodges, to approve the City Development Corporation Budget Amendment for fiscal year 2223. Any comments? All in favor of approving that motion, please raise your right hand. Okay, all against? And motion passes four to one.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
And Ronnie, I'll call you about that.
Yeah.
Okay, item 7.5, Parks Recreation and Community Services Board.
You have one application for the vacant position on the board, and that is Ms. Charlene Smith. Her application is at your station, so you can see a little bit of information about her. It is the only application we have at this time.
Need a motion?
Need a motion to approve or not approve Charlene Smith for the Parks Recreation and Community Services Board?
Yeah, Barbie, I'll make a motion to approve Charlene Smith to the Parks and Recreation and Community Service Board.
Okay, motion by Councilman Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Councilman Berger.
Can somebody tell us about her?
Sir?
Can somebody tell us about her? Does anybody know her?
We have, we have a sheet.
I don't see that. Okay.
Yeah, she's a longtime employee of the Boys and Girls Club. I don't know what else she put on there.
Oh, okay.
American Legion Auxiliary.
El Campo Lions, Lady Lions Club.
She's, she's a very, very involved...
Sometimes we find people that we didn't know, and I think it's important that somebody has some knowledge of the person that we appoint.
Mr. Inka.
Not everybody, but somebody needs to know. Sounds good.
I think she's a woman, a resident that will actually show up for meetings.
Right.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Any more questions or discussion? All in favor of approving Charlene Smith for the vacant position on the Parks Recreation and Community Services Board, please raise your right hand. Motion passes five to nothing. Okay, it is 6:34 PM. We are going to go into closed executive session. We have two items on that agenda. One is pursuant to Section 551.072, deliberation regarding the purchase exchange lease or value of real property. It's being called Project Recycle. The second item is closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.072, deliberation regarding the purchase exchange lease or value of real property, old landfill lease. So we're adjourning this open session, and all may wait outside in the lobby and come back in in a little while, or if not, we don't see you again. Who do we need to stay?
Renee.
Okay.
Thank you. Very little episode of Blight. If you heard beeping, it was me.
Okay.
I'm okay.
It is 6:56 PM. We are going to leave executive session and reopen our open session. There will be no action taken on item one. Would someone like to make a motion on item two?
Mayor, I'll make a motion. We lease the property to the current leasing, Brent Weed.
You want to give the dollar amount, David?
Put it up there, I will.
Okay. $1,350 per year?
Yes, $1,350 per year for five years.
Okay. And do I have a second to that motion?
I second it.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Hodges, second by Councilman Ward. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item 10, reports, Blight discussion.
And this item is on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Hancock. And I believe, did you leave these at our station?
Yes, I did.
Yeah. I didn't know if you wanted to talk about it or not.
Yeah, I will. I don't know what all we want to talk about, but the other thing I passed out was in, I think, in the Chronicle yesterday.
Yeah.
And, you know, an outfit in New York, New York Travel Center or something, looked for great places for people to go and picked a hundred top ones, and two of them were small towns in Texas.
Marble Falls and Fredericksburg.
Yeah, Fredericksburg and Marble Falls. And those used to be some pretty dusty, rundown little towns about a generation ago, and look at them now.
Yeah.
And just to me, it's another indication of what we can accomplish. We're a lot closer to a big city. I told many one time, we were at a conference, what we really need is a mountain and a lake. But we've got a big swimming pool out east of town instead, but, you know, we can clean this town up. And I am certainly, I think all of us are grateful for the various businesses that have really improved the looks of their businesses. And there's been a good bit of that, but we've still got a good ways to go. We started this project saying, a long time ago, saying we were going to just clean up the main corridors through town and then expand from there, maybe one street over on each side or something, and go from there, and then try to go into residential areas and clean up uninhabitable buildings and things like that. And we've made some progress. I agree with that, and I'm grateful for that, but there's a lot still to be done. I mean, if you look at the article that was in the newspaper recently, it has the same report that we had at our meeting, our Blight Committee meeting. We've gone for several years and have done very little. I think we've resolved eight issues or something in a past year. But I think that, first of all, we need to enforce the ordinances that we have on the books. We all complain about the federal government not enforcing the laws they have on the books, but we don't either. And it's always a difficult thing to do. Nobody wants to go knocking on somebody's door and tell them they've got to clean up the junk in their yard, or call them somebody and tell them Grandma's house has been abandoned for 50 years. What are y'all going to do with it? We're going to file suit against you, or take you to court, but it has to be done. And we're going to have to, you know, somebody has to be working for the city that's willing to do that. So my first recommendation is that we enforce the ordinances we have, and maybe put an item on the first meeting of each month so we can get a little report, just a short, brief report on what's been done for ordinance enforcement in the past month. And when we get to a point where we don't need to talk about that anymore, then we'll be happy not to. But at the same time, you know, I mentioned it before, that I'm frustrated with the old E.J. Mills filling station down here. They did clean it up some, but we've passed an ordinance saying that we'd have special use permits, and I asked what the purpose of that was. And we were told, well, that's to make sure if anybody's working on cars or changing tires or something like that, they have an indoor place where they can do it. And I didn't read the contract that we were approving very closely. I came to find out that we'd taken that out of it. And I think that's the only reason we put a special use permit on that kind of thing. And I think that, you know, you go through Fredericksburg, or you go through Marble Falls, or you go through Edna, it hasn't been in Edna much so ago, you drive through Edna and their main thoroughfares. You don't see any tires or any engine blocks laying out on the side of the road. I don't know how they enforce it, but it doesn't look that way. And we've gotten used to the way it looks in El Campo, I think. And we need to change that, and if we need to change our ordinances. I remember one time when Lotta was here from Pearland, and we said, somebody with the city says, well, there's nothing you can do about that. And Lotta said, oh, yes, there is. I said, I know how to fix that. And, you know, we can change ordinances, and we can set the city up so we can enforce all of this, and I think we need to do it. I mean, somebody comes into town thinking, maybe, you know, I'm going to spread out from Houston, I'm going to look for a place to establish another branch in my business or something. They start driving into town, start looking at all the junk on each side of the road. They're going to say to hell with that and keep on going, and look for some better place. And we've got good facilities. We've got, just throughout our baseball park and our school facilities and our city facilities, we've got a lot of good stuff that would appeal to people, but a few ugly things, and people are just going to keep on moving on and say, no, we don't want to move to that town, even though they don't know, they don't get a chance to find out what great people we have here in El Campo, and how cooperative the city can be with them and all. And I just think we need to press on. And as I say, I think the one thing would be to contact Lotta. She was excellent when she was working with us. And get her recommendations and tell her, you know, we need to clean some stuff up, and we don't really want any engine blocks or cars repaired on the shoulder of the road and lawnmowers piled up out in front of somebody's business that they're working on. And I think we need to fix that. If we need to change the ordinances, then other towns have already done that, and I think we ought to follow suit. But Bill Smart wrote up an article, I don't know how many of y'all saw it, Council can distribute it if we haven't sent it to everybody. But Bill Smart's head of our Blight Committee, and he wrote up three or four pages suggesting what the problem was and how to go about fixing it, and he's really gung ho about it, and we need to support him.
He's pretty excited about our sidewalk project that's coming along the entryway that will be lighted, and he wants a tree-lined entrance to make, very aesthetically pleasing as you come in. And the good news is that it'll pay for some of those driveways to go from gravel to concrete, so that will help.
Mm-hmm.
But we do have a long way to go. We agree with you on that.
You've done a lot, and we've got a lot to do. You know, these little signposts that are sticking up and frames up there, nothing in them. We've worked hard to pass an ordinance against that kind of thing, and we haven't done anything with it, to enforce it, but not much, anyway. A good ways to go.
That property next to Carpet One out there, it's got all those trucks around it. It looks like a junkyard.
It is.
I'm going to let our planning director.
I mean, you've got that property, you've got to look at that coming into town, then you look to your left, and you've got to see all those windmills.
And Fisher Street. Some of it's not in the city limits.
We're going to decorate those windmills for Christmas.
Yeah. I like to decorate them.
[laughing].
With a patent torch.
So do you want me to do, like, full information? I did make an update, if you're interested in it, and I can make it quick. I know you're here a little late, if you'd like. I can do that.
Just can you do anything about that junkyard, that truck?
Let's start with that.
Yes and no. It's outside of our jurisdiction, but I am in communication regularly with the county's environmentalist, and they have taken them to court as of October and have been ordered to put up the fence that's required by the state of Texas for junkyards, for salvage yards, and so the county's going to be watching for them to comply with that. I do not see any movement towards that, and once it passes its timeline, I'm sure they'll go after it. But they're keeping in communication with me, and they're handling it for us.
There is somebody with the county that's working on it.
Yes, sir. And also TCEQ has been notified of environmental issues, and so they're having to do summer mediation.
Well, there's bound to be a lot of all that stuff dumped on the ground out there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
You know what the timeline is for them with the fence?
It should be sometime towards the end of the year or early next year. I'm not able, the timeline was about 90 days of six months. I'd have to just double check.
You don't have to have a license to create a junkyard?
You do.
And they have a license to create a junkyard?
They do not. But the Texas Licensing and Regulation, TDLR, they can't disclose information on cases, so there's no way to verify if they have one or not, but I'm pretty sure that they do.
You know, we have something similar right here in town, though. If you go across from Sunnyside right there, they're fixing all those trucks, and they've got them stacked all over and almost to the road sometimes.
Where S&amp;W Welding used to be.
Yes, yes.
Larry Sanders, yeah.
I mean, I think part of the problem, part of the challenge is, is that El Campo was this big, and the industry developed on the outside, and then El Campo grew. So we're kind of jumping over that, so we're kind of wrapped around some of this industry. But I agree with you, Mr. Hancock. I mean, the corridor is the main, it's the main entryway. And like I said, I had a site visit, and that was one of the things. You know, we're driving through town, and they're looking around, and they're like, well, that building's empty, what's going on? That building's empty, what's going on? You know, but that's a nice building, you know? You know, Jackson Street was one of them, et cetera. So they do take notice, and they do come into town, and they look around, and, you know, you can go on a myriad of things. I think the TDS, the switch to TDS caused some problems because the community was, I guess, complacent. They were comfortable with the service that they were being provided by the, I can't remember who it was, the other one that would come and pick up the.
Waste connections.
Yeah, they would come and pick up the brush, or they would come and pick up a couch, or they would do this and that. And it's not that way anymore. These are the rules. You either follow them or they, you know, you don't, and it gets left out there, and here we are. I think we also have to be cognizant that there are people really struggling in El Campo. I mean, sales tax may be up. It's not up significantly. I track it, but it's up, it's up the first three months of this fiscal year. But it's going to become more challenging for the residents that are here because we don't have the income, we don't have some of the jobs. And some of these folks, they don't have the money to, you know, I guess, I guess, fix up some of their properties or whatnot, but, and I think we need to keep that in mind, that if you look around, the top-paying industries that we have here, or businesses, are actually are taxing in the decent. You know, so not everyone works there. But we have to lead by example. I mean, that's how I feel. We have to lead by example. Our facilities need to be kept up, they need to be maintained. I also think the city needs to allocate more resources than $10,000 to tearing down buildings. I would like to see, if we continue on this trajectory, we obviously need to be cognizant of budget increases next year, but we need to allocate some of that money to cleaning things up. I'm not saying giving a free hand, but I think that the community cleanup we used to do, when we'd go around, I think if we're part of the solution, the people will be receptive, and they will be part of it as well. Because I can say this, and I'll drop it here, but I've noticed driving around town, looking at Christmas lights, there are areas in this town that used to not have. Christmas lights. So people are, are putting in the effort to make their place. Some, some are making it a little better, a little nicer, or, or, you know, showing a little pride and everything. So I think if we can work with folks and understand that, you know, we do have ordinances, we do need to enforce them, but we've got to be universal, and we've got to be consistent on where it is. We can't let a little trailer park over here that's, you know, behind, behind the Texaco, you know, we passed an ordinance years ago that all the, the trailer parks had to be a certain way, Pitchers, Lamco, well, that one never, never got up to snuff.
Do you want to add more to that?
They clean it up, though, when the city really gets on them, and then, uh, six months later, it's, uh, full of junk again.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we've just got to be, as, um, the newspaper said, we've got to be proactive in this thing, and the city doesn't need to wait for somebody to file a complaint or to call in and register a complaint. Uh, our city people can go out and look, look around the town, they can see, if they're familiar with the ordinance, they can see what's going on and where they need to do work. But I did see that house over on Walnut Street has been cleaned up, uh, and they've put plywood over the windows and the doors and stuff. I don't know what, where that leads to, but at least, uh, you don't have to worry about little children from the area walking in there and falling through the floor.
Sure.
And, and I'd like to see the city clean up their dirt piles.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's, that's
Yes, sir.
We're preaching to people to clean up, and you drive down the corridor and see dirt pile, three to four dirt piles there, and it's been there for a long time.
Yes, sir. It goes away, and then it reoccurs years over time. Okay, we will make sure we get that taken care of.
You know, I just think it's important, we're trying to get, uh, trying to develop the city from economic development standpoint. Uh, um, we're, they're doing a whole lot of good, and really working hard, and I know the court system is working hard, and, uh, we need to support y'all, we need to, you need help.
You know, John, one of my Blight complaints, and Courtney hears it all the time, is these signs.
Oh, yeah.
Houses, we, we pay cash for houses, we pay cash for this and that. I carry a hoe in the back of my truck, and what they've started doing now is putting the signs up high enough you can't reach them.
You just put them down in the hole?
You can't reach them. I've got three in my pickup right now, and I told Courtney, if I can do it, our city staff can do it. Uh, in fact, I enjoy doing it. I get a kick out of it.
You need to let us know so we can add that to the count, okay?
Yeah, and pull them up out of the ground. Sometimes they'll, they'll put them where it's dangerous. There was one where you get in the right lane, headed west on the loop to turn onto Norris, and then there's the ditch. I couldn't, uh, I couldn't get over there to get to that sign without, I should have called the chief and asked for some, uh, patrol car to turn it.
Somebody pulled you out of the ditch once you got down the road.
But couldn't you follow that, couldn't you follow that trail? You've got a phone number on there.
There's a phone number, that's what I said.
Follow the trail and
Yeah.
Ask our city attorney to write them a letter.
If you guys will give me two minutes, I'd like to give you an update because we have
Just please.
What y'all have been telling us, and we are getting that feedback, so just give you some quick information so that you know that we're hearing you and following up on these things. Um, so one of the things that we're looking at is department updates. We restructured starting in about mid-August is when I took over. We started enabling our fire and building officials to initiate, so if they see anything out while they're doing things, they can initiate through our code enforcement officers, any building-related cases. Uh, we are training an additional code enforcement person, so we will now have three instead of one official. Um, we're making improvements to our software programming, it hasn't been functional, hasn't been efficient, and it's not easy to trap cases, uh, so we're fixing that so that we can make sure we're following up on things. We started building our digital record archives, we had nothing digitally recorded, so all of that's being slowly taken care of, um, and we're improving our, streamlining our processes, including our building department with our code, our, our code enforcement on the building department side. Um, with our case management, we have, we are reviewing the last three years of cases that are in our digital records to see what's open and why, so that we can resolve those. Uh, we looked at 30 years' worth of dangerous building and condemned property cases, and only four out of the 100 that we had needed any follow-up, so we are doing that. Uh, we've also reviewed the 2019 corridor surveys that were done through Lotta. Uh, we looked at all of the fair and poorly rated properties, and out of 58 properties that were under those categories, only two of them needed, needed some resolution, so we've been looking at those. Uh, we're also reviewing mowing and maintenance expenses, so it doesn't look like we have filed a lot of liens lately, so we are going back on, uh, cases where there's repeated liens in place and we're, or repeated fines and fees in place so that we can start placing liens. We have filed 11 liens, uh, in the last couple of months here. Uh, we've also done a, a corridor inspection for the sign-related violations, I know that's always a, a hot topic, and so we've removed 22 temporary signs. That includes, um, signs that are not just like what the mayor is speaking about, but may have been torn or tattered or dried or just looked really bad, we got those thrown away. Um, and we sent out 14 letters for permanent signs that we have been in communication with business owners about timelines to repair or utilize or remove those signs, so all of those are in process. Uh, but also improving our interdepartment coordination, I heard you mention, working with the courts, we're keeping them very busy, very busy, right, Judge?
Yeah.
With a lot of cases that need to be resolved, and we're also working with our PD in case we need backup for any of those cases, uh, and we're looking at ways to work with the public works to try to help them better, because we know that their staff, uh, has a lot going on, and it's really hard for them to take care of all of our mowing lots for us, and the trash stuff that we're dealing with, with the trash company, and so trying to figure out some solutions to make that easier and more solvable. Um, we're also reviewing and updating the regulations. I am a regulation nerd, so I like to look at all your ordinances, uh, going through some of those to see what changes, improvements, or updates we can make. We will be looking to, um, change our building codes. Right now, we're 2015, we're going to improve those to a 2018, which makes sense for us geographically, even though it doesn't sound very new, uh, it is a big improvement for us. And we do have a grant that's in, in submission, and we're waiting to hear back with regards to the comprehensive plan update, which can also provide some support for that. So looking forward, we're going to continue to enforce our resolution follow-up times in sending unresolved cases to court. Uh, we're going to determine a solution to the trash and brush issue. I know that's more of a trash company, uh, contract issue, and we're trying to figure out how we can fix that. Um, I am looking, this may not be a very popular move, but, um, I'm looking at taking on the Keep El Campo Beautiful Board and merging the Citizen Blight Committee into that, and coming to you all for approval for that, and then a reappointment of the Keep El Campo Beautiful Board. The reason I'm looking to do that is because in order for me to beautify and reduce blight, I need it to be one entity, and if they're under the Keep, or the, the Keep Texas Beautiful Program designation, it gives me access to resources and funds and grants and, and all kinds of things to help make this stuff happen. Um, and then we're also, uh, I mentioned some of this reviews, the regulations, land uses for each zone, and then lastly, just those stats so you can see them, because this is a major improvement for us. We have 78 open cases since, uh, October 1st. Um, we're only in mid-December right now, we have 22 cases with the court, uh, 31 of those cases were closed out, and you can see the breakdown there. Did I mention the lien count? I did, right? We have that.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so we're, we're trying to make up for time, and we're doing the best that we can, and we appreciate the feedback. When you guys see anything out in your community or in your districts, just let us know. If we have something, we can give you an update, if we don't, we'll take care of it.
This is a good format that you've got here, and maybe in a month or so, just give us a little bit of an update, you know? If there's four and five minutes or something, and tell us how it's getting along, and tell us if you need any help, that's what we really want to know.
Absolutely.
We're willing to help, we're willing to help you if you need help, or more people, or more money, or whatever, uh, I think this group's willing to support you.
I appreciate that. Well, if you can support the merger of the Blight and the Keep El Campo Beautiful, we're going to use them as an advisory board for some of the things
They're all good people, they don't mind working together.
Does that have to come to council?
Yes.
Yes, sir. So you'll see that in January for a resolution to merge them, and then the following meeting, I'll bring back a reappointment, and I will be recommending you reappoint from the two boards, uh, so that it's not totally new, you just, your picks come from one of the two boards, and we reappoint that board.
Who attends and who doesn't?
Yes. Yes, sir. I can do that.
It's discouraging to staff to go to the work to call a meeting, and then you don't have a call.
We know the feeling.
Yeah. It didn't give much of a turnout from the Blight Committee, did it? We had two great guys that showed up, but, uh, and you and I, and the city staff showed up, uh, well represented, but, uh, but the committee hadn't been active.
Right.
You know, I've got a friend who just put in a business art gallery, uh,
Thank you, Crystal.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you, on Martin Street in El Richmond. Martin Street is the main drag with the city hallers and everything.
Yes.
And it's undergone a tremendous change in the last, uh, couple of years, when I've been going there and watching it, and the lady that owns this gallery said, oh, Richmond passed a law saying if you've got a vacant building in that area, if you don't have it rented, you have to tear it down. And so they started filling them up with cute little stairs.
No way to do it. Okay, is that it for Blight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, the next item is, uh, 2024 city council meeting schedule.
And it's included in your packet, just for your information. Uh, there will be some meetings that we will likely have to reschedule or cancel. You can cancel to, to a year. Uh, the first one that comes to mind is, uh, May 27th, which is Memorial Day, uh, but we will be bringing that back to council closer to that date. This is just for your information only.
Okay, item 10.3, the 2024 election information and calendar.
We're just full of information tonight. Here is your election calendar, uh, not that one, uh, she's getting to it, give her a second, uh, with the dates, there you go. And January 17th is the first day for filing applications.
Really?
Yes, sir. Or, or
That's for the at-large.
It's, it's, tis the season, uh, so get ready, uh, for, for the at-large election of '24.
More signs.
More signs.
More signs. And this, again, just for your information.
Okay, and then the city manager's report.
And last but not least, first of all, it's a pleasure to be back here in front of you, uh, after being off for a few weeks. Uh, thank you to all of you that reached out to me during my recovery, I, I do appreciate it. A couple of things, uh, Councilmember Ward mentioned that we have seen some, uh, a little bit of spikes in our sales tax. I want you to know that we're monitoring that, and we're hoping to hold on to that, and, uh, earmark those funds for, uh, as needed for next year's budget, uh, with the intent to hopefully offset any, uh, insurance costs that we may experience, because we experienced it, we, we dodged a bullet this year, so we'll be looking into that. City offices are closed, uh, the 20th afternoon, that is the, uh, city's annual Christmas party, we will provide ample notice, it will go in the paper, is that this week?
Yes.
That we're going to be, be shut down the 20th afternoon, that is a Wednesday, and Christmas and the day after Christmas. I will be sending you an update and letting you know when trash services will be running, because Christmas is a trash holiday for TDS. And that is all I have. I wish you all a happy holidays, a very Merry Christmas, and we will see you next year.
Thank you.
Okay. That completes the agenda, it's 27:23 PM, this meeting of city council is adjourned.
It's very fine.
You've got one spot.
And I remembered, I turned my phone back on.
Yeah.
I'm still hot. A week later, I don't get any phone calls.